I have six o'clock. And we'd like to welcome everybody to the October, to the September meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. Tonight, the prayer will be given by Alderman Bingle.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go off course a little bit, and I see my friend Pastor Strayhorn in the audience. Would you mind bringing the prayer before our city this evening? Thank you for being here.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come today, God, we say thank you. We thank you, Lord, for your grace, your mercy, and we thank you, Lord, for our city officials, and allowing us to be able to come, Lord, and be a part of decision-making, Lord, for this city. And we pray, God, that you allow them to have wisdom and guidance from you, Lord, as they move forward, God, and to make decisions on behalf of the citizens, God. We pray, Lord, that we keep them in mind, God, that we move forward, God, that we might be able to grow together in unity and carry out all the things, God, that this beautiful city needs to be successful. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderman Harris.
President.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
President.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Everybody's here. We'd like to correct ourselves. This is the October 8th meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. At this time, is everybody getting with the agenda? Let's go to the requests and petitions of citizens. Tonight, we have several of them. Joseph Darby. Yeah, everybody.
Hey, Nicky.
Hey, pardon, Josh. I guess that's you, Josh.
Right here, up here.
Josh, call him up.
Joseph's calling right now.
All right. Give us your name and address for the record.
Joseph Odom, the third, just in case there's any confusion.
Thanks.
106 Sierra Drive, New Bern, North Carolina. And, you know, this is on behalf of the local business owners and the musicians in town in regard to the noise ordinance that's under review, I suppose. And I think the main, main point I want to make about it is you have the desires of a few versus the desires of many, and I think the people complaining about noise, I think, is a relatively small group. And I think you can go out to these businesses any Friday or Saturday evening and see a comparatively large group of people enjoying it. But the main point I wanted to make is there's been a lot of talk about decibels and distance, you know, from the facility and the amount of decibels at that distance. And I think the, the only real relevant noise is how loud it is in the homes of the people several hundred yards away that are complaining, and I think it's negligible. But I think, I just don't think it's too much to ask on a Friday or Saturday night to have no noise ordinance until 11:00 PM. I think when you live downtown in a city, that just seems to be, it seems to be common sense to me, more so than levels of noise at X number of feet, because I think the number I've heard thrown around is 100 feet. Well, everyone within 100 feet of the establishments that have live music, everyone that's within 100 feet is there voluntarily to, specifically to hear that noise. So, you know, I liken it to, you have towns like Morehead City where you go downtown on the weekends till even 2:00 in the morning, and there's not a noise ordinance that I'm aware of, but at least if there is, they don't enforce it. And that's a city that's thriving. And the contrast to that would be something like Kinston where it's like a ghost town. And I think, I think the main question is do we want to have live entertainment or not, more so than what decibels are acceptable? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For Joseph. Next one is James Wickline.
Name and address for the record.
Yes.
Name and address.
James Wickline, 318 Glenberry Drive. Yeah, like, to follow up on Josh's point, decimal readings are arbitrary. It's not a matter of how loud is it where you are. You can make a crowd louder than the band at any point in time. Are you gonna shut down the crowd as well as the band for having a good time? That's 11:00 on Fridays and Saturdays, I don't think that's a big deal. That's, that's what downtown is. Remember, what, 15 years ago downtown, 8:00, it was just closed up. It looked like a turtle in its shell. And now you've got people spending money all night long, just about every day of the week long, until 11, 12, on the weekends, you're talking two. So, the idea that we're going to limit the, the fun that you can have downtown because it's deemed loud by a handful of people, just seems to me that it's not worth that handful of people really having that set. I guess that's it. Any questions? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joe Peters.
Joe Peters, 106 Hillcrest. I just want to say, I just got back from New York City. It's very loud there. It's very loud there, and there's a lot of entertainment if you're in Times Square. We, I work for the Curtis Video Group. In fact, I run the radio stations there, and we use the farmer's market for a lot of fun and exciting things. A lot of those include music, and they include activities and, and things for the, the area to enjoy. We just got through doing an event this past Friday night that ended at 9:00, and it was very successful. We've worked with a lot of nonprofits, United Way, and we do a bacon event every year, and we use the farmer's market for that. And part of the draw of that is, is music, having live music. And, you know, sort of my concern with it is, is, you know, having something reasonable and acceptable that we can still utilize that facility. And, you know, a lot of the reason that we use that facility is because it's within walking distance. So, we don't, we're not necessarily just a destination for people. We're, we're utilized, you know, we're another resource there. It also helps us because we're able to have a covered area, you know, if there's rain, like weather like today, you can still do something there. But music is part of it, and, you know, entertainment, and I think that having an acceptable noise level that is something that we don't have to fear, like we're gonna do something wrong, or that we're gonna upset somebody, that's just very clear, would be very helpful for us. And so, I hope that after all this is done, that we, we can be clear on that. So, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Danny Anderson.
Danny Anderson, 4703 Hwood Drive, Trent Woods. I've lived in this area just for all my life. I've lived in New Bern City Limits for about 25 years, and I've lived in Trent Woods for about 20 years. I've seen New Bern downtown when there was nothing, I mean, I've seen it thrive when I was a younger child, then it went down to where everything moved out to the mall and downtown was dead, and now it's coming back again. And the entertainment downtown is part of that. It's drawing people down, myself and a lot of other people in the area. And if we eliminate the entertainment, as some of the other guys said, that's also gonna eliminate some of the funds that's coming into the city. And it's also, when I was, when I was a teenager, we used to drive to Greenville, Atlantic Beach cause there was no entertainment here. But now, the younger crowd, so to speak, and even the middle-aged crowd, they're not gonna have to be on the road. They can come in their own city, their own place, enjoy themselves, have a short ride home. Also, another thing, just personally for me, I'm retired now, and playing music is part of my livelihood. So, if you're gonna shut music down, let's take the money out of my pocket, and I'm not very happy about that at all. So, anyway, I just think we need to look at it from a perspective that, yes, it is downtown, and so if there's gonna be some noise, I can understand during the week, but on Friday and Saturday night, I don't think it's too much to ask to have some entertainment down there in the city. That's all.
Thank you.
Tony Bonici.
Tony Bonici, 512 Jefferson Avenue, here in New Bern. This has been going on for a while now. I remember February 2000, I came to New Bern, and I, what have I, I moved here from Virginia Beach, and this place was dead. And then 2005, I bought a boat, living at the Sheraton. And that first weekend, I'm like, what have I done? All this noise going on. Back then, the Sheraton was the only gig in town where you can go have some fun. I started going there, and it was nice, but that was the only place. Fast forward, 2008, 2009, things started happening. 2009, 13, 17, I decided to run for office, and the same cry I hear from the young people is, "There's nothing for us here to do. There's nothing for us here to do." And it's echoed all the time. Like, a couple of these gentlemen said, "The wants of the few cannot overtake what the majority wants." I would like to see a gathering with the people that oppose this ordinance and the people that want it. If you're gonna point a finger at me, telling me that I'm doing something wrong, well, I have a right to know who those people are, not they. I want to know who the "they" are. So, let's have some sort of meeting with, I don't know what you want to call it, a public hearing, where the people that are concerned that they want a noise ordinance and the people that don't see a problem. Because downtown belongs to everybody, not just the residents that are downtown people. Now, you've had people that lived downtown for a long time, they saw it through when it was nothing, before Swiss Bear took over, but then you have people that bought after New Bern has come off its, you know, on its feet, like Sky Sale. You knew when you bought at Sky Sale, you're gonna have some noise. So, my point is, is this is being done, I feel, because certain crowds are coming to downtown, and some people don't like the crowds they see. And I say it the way I, do I always say it? I don't have any filters, and I just feel that there's a lot of people downtown that don't appreciate the particular crowd that has been coming downtown. So, I think you yourselves should take the time, maybe on a weekend, and go and frequent on some of these places. Right now, there's only one or two downtown. The Harvey shut down, they haven't rebuilt. Yet you have Blackbeards, they got wiped out, and within a week, he was back open. It just shows you that people want to see these places flourish. So, you guys have the power to either make New Bern continue to flourish or go back to the 1980s. It's up to you guys. But in the long run, it's the city that will lose. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Edwin Vargas.
Edwin Vargas, 230 Abmore Drive in New Bern, North Carolina. Since this issue is one of the most important areas within the Duffy Field community, I had to speak tonight on the importance of the Stanley White Recreation Center. This facility and 901 Chapman Street is vital to the community in the Duffy Field and surrounding area. This facility has been used for decades and took a devastating hit during Hurricane Florence. I was pleased to see so many citizens down at City Hall to voice their opinion and concern since it has been one year, the drag and uncertainty has been voiced and shown on local leaders, elders, and teenagers on what is going on at Stanley White Recreation Center. I was pleased that all of the Aldermen and Mayor voted on a resolution for Stanley White Recreation Center to be built better and stronger in 901 Chapman Street. Even if it has to be elevated, it may be a joint financial general fund to raise that property to meet flood standards. My hope is FEMA will make their answers known to the city manager, mayor, and Alderman. If, and I say if, this grand facility in Duffy Field Stanley White Recreation Center cannot be built at its current site, I have contacted Alderman Harris on two pieces of property. One, the city owns, is the old Days Inn property that is, that will be in the main road on Broad Street. The other piece of property is 1211 North 41 Broad Street, across and on the same side of the road as our New Bern Fire Department. That tract, GIS 801282928, is owned by a church group. Both pieces of property will be in the center hub of the Five Points area. This area has seen a revitalization of its own with a coffee shop, businesses, laundromat, and car repair shop. I know if I had deep pockets, some interior areas of Duffy Field need a remodeling project. Some homes need to be a good paint job fixing up. I was pleased with the recent cleanup of Duffy Field. By redoing Stanley White, it will be its own center hub, which other areas in Duffy Field can gain on. Stanley White Recreation Center will be one of the biggest projects Duffy Field and New Bern has seen in decades. We are so interested in the western part of New Bern and downtown, I have voiced my opinion about doing for Duffy Field, and this cannot be forgotten. As stated by Alderman Harris, if we can find $5 to $6 million on elevator for City Hall, we can find money for Stanley White. The dividends spent on Stanley White Recreation Center will be felt for our youth, local leaders and elders, to get them off the streets and pulled in by the drug game. The youth of Duffy Field are at stake. We, as citizens, deserve a written timeline on Stanley White Recreation Center posted by the Public Affairs Officer, Colleen Roberts, or shown on CTV3. This will ensure Stanley White Recreation Center is not put on the back burner, but the front-line issue, which affects so many individuals who use this facility. Citizens, you need to contact your local Alderman, congressional, senatorial, and President Trump, since FEMA has been slow to respond. I took the opportunity to do this, and hopefully we'll receive a quick response and inform Alderman Harris on this important issue.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mike Duffy, 121 Morning Dome Trail in New Bern, and same topic, actually. I was impressed at the way the community came together and the board came together at the last meeting on, you know, the objectives for Stanley White, but I think realistically, we have to know that this is gonna take quite some time. And we're all hoping for a good outcome. But in the meantime, also made a great impression on me, was the person who spoke after the vote, after the break. And she stressed the need for recreation in these areas, you know, especially where families are challenged and so on and so forth. And I think that's very important, that the board explore with the community every opportunity that we might have to provide more recreation in the area. And one thing I noticed on the Parks website, since I'm on the Empress Commission, is that we were starting intramural basketball and at West New Bern. And I was wondering if we could possibly consider reducing the fee on that, which is $40 per, you know, enrolled lead, even for kids only five years old. So, if we could bring that down to maybe half that or something like that, and possibly provide a shuttle between Stanley White and West New Bern, I think that might, might help a little bit. And, you know, it's important to reach out to the community and let them know that you're doing everything you can, because it is very important, you know. These kids don't have the options that I have, you know, and it's, it's very easy for them to take a wrong turn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Bernard White.
Good evening.
He's already called my name, I just want to go ahead and say what I need to say. We had several discussions, and discussions about Stanley White. There's some As and Bs, Cs and Ds that come up. I'm a firm believer that we're gonna stay on A. A mean Stanley White, we were relative, Stanley White to be built in the same location, with the allocation, no changes. The reason I say that, because if I, since I've been around for a while, if I go back and give you a history, quick history, when we performed at the gym, that was built with pendants and bricks that we gave as truies so they could build it. The same time, the senior citizen building was built off of taxpayers' money, which was our parents' money. And we weren't allowed to play there. Okay, so that, that was the two recreational areas. When we got to do Stanley White, through the government, they allowed for two, two to be built. And the reason they allowed two to be built, because of more, more noise made on the other side about West New Bern being built. So, that's the person that donated the property to West New Bern, that's how New Bern got, West New Bern got built. Okay, when they started building, and I'll tell the story over, over and over and again, when they started building, they changed the structures, they built Stanley White according to the blueprints. They were starting it on according to the blueprints. West New Bern, they had changed the structures. When they changed the structures, Amanda, Mr. Vale sent a letter to DC, two people came down. I've said it, it might be redundant to some people. They came back and looked at, they went back to West New Bern, told them they had to tear whatever they had that wasn't according to that plan down, and that's why Stanley White both looked the same. Now, the other part of the structure that you have with Stanley White in the front there, we spent 10 years working on that. I was on one, I was the president of the advisory board. We spent 10 years working on that. It took us 10 years before we could get it done, get that done. After we got that done, someone said, "Well, what about the other establishment? If they got an organization or a group there that's willing to work and come and plan and stick on having something done, oh, well and good. But why is it whenever we decide to make a move, somebody else come up with A, B, and D? We don't, we don't need that. We need to stay just like it is, and we need to elevate it." If we, before they finished Third Avenue, some of you guys remember, I said, "When you finish Third Avenue and they finally open that street up, I said, 'The next storm or next good rain we have,' I said, 'Stanley White gonna flood.'" It did, okay? All I'm saying, all I'm asking for is just do. We'll, we'll last mostly every time and everything. We put out the most quality athletes and people from over there. We keep the city on the map the best we can. It was, it was the most active recreational area here. Okay, other people try to feed off of us and feed off our coaches. We have at least two, I'm not gonna count myself, so we have one of the best coaches that you could ever got around here to coach your kids in baseball or football and basketball. We put out quality kids. Some of, some of y'all, and I'm, I'm good at saying it, are not willing to change, are not willing to try to help anybody, you think you are. I've been through y'all, I dealt with some of y'all. Fair is fair, but it's not time to be, I'm not gonna be fair with you when you're not fair with me. However you feel towards me, oh, well and good, but, but treat the rest of my people right. Do what you need to do. We're not trying to hurt anybody, all we're doing is trying to develop the city and build it up. You want to remove it so you can go ahead and claim what is not rightfully yours.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stanley White. Next one is Tyrone Brown.
My name is Tyrone Brown, and I stay at 726 Second Avenue in New Bern. I am speaking on behalf of the youth in my community. I think we should elevate Stanley White Recreational Center to 12 feet, and I also think we should keep the gym open because that gym is the heart of the community of Duffy Field and surrounding areas. And that gym is where we have some of our community events and audiences. I think we should build back Stanley White at 901 Chapman Street in New Bern, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maxwell Oglesby.
Good evening.
Maxwell Oglesby, 2506 Montgomery Court, Ward 2. I'm a veteran, small business owner, as well as an advocate for cannabis reform here in, in New Bern, North Carolina. We learned as a nation during alcohol prohibition that simply banning a wildly demanded substance does not make the substance go away. Instead, prohibition creates a criminal market to satisfy the demand, which brings with it a host of public health and safety problems. As a result, the District of Columbia and 11 other states have adopted recreational use. 33 states as well have it medically legalized and have been able to see hundreds of millions of dollars in tax revenue that has funded many programs, as well as increased the clearance and solve rate for actual crime in legal states for law enforcement officers. Cannabis legalization is progress, something that needs to be settled now and not for the next generation. Just as any prohibition was 85 years ago, states such as ours with the alcohol beverage control, as well as alcohol law enforcement, led the way in developing alternative policies that control alcohol while allowing responsible adult use, and we should do the same thing for cannabis. A 2017 poll by Elon University showed that most, 80% of North Carolinians support medical cannabis legalization. Of course, we're a Dillon Rule state, meaning the powers with the state's general assembly and not with local municipalities, unless otherwise authorized. But unlike what most know, that doesn't mean that you as Alderman, as well as Mayor, cannot do anything to help your fellow New Bernians, your constituents, your neighbors, your chemo survivors, your cancer patients, as well as the veterans and other people who are around here who are stuck on pills because they don't have other alternative healthcare options afforded to them. Resolutions can be passed to have cannabis pursued at the lowest level possible, or to give citation in lieu of, giving officers more time to pursue true crime and to possibly serve as senior resource officers in our schools, instead of having this horrible Alice program come out to where we're teaching our children and our teachers to fight off school intruders. New Bern is labeled as a retirement community, where everyone knows someone who could possibly benefit from cannabis being legalized. I'm asking you to take this issue seriously. People are in pain from botched surgeries. Chemo patients need help with side effects such as nausea, muscle pain, as well as joints and migraines, that cannabis has medically proven time and time again to help where CBD falls short. The amount of veterans that commit suicide each day due to the fact that they are stuck taking antidepressants that cause bigger issues than what they're trying to solve in the first place. You're standing in the way of others having a healthier alternative for relief from illness because of the closed-mindedness of people who sat in those seats 100 years ago. Over the next few weeks, months, if years need be, I will be attending these meetings providing information, possible solutions, statistics on the subject that could help put New Bern, Craven County, and even eastern North Carolina on the forefront of cannabis reform. Lastly, I ask, which is more important? Enabling our law enforcement officers to pursue crime and fight this opioid epidemic that has taken so many locally, or spend more time and effort and money to pursue, prosecute something two-thirds of the US has legalized already? Alderman Odom, Alderman Best, Alderman Kinsey, Mayor Outlaw, Alderman Astor, Alderman Harris, and Alderman Bingle. I look forward to discussing this further with you and the Indian constituents that you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Ethel Sampson.
Give honor to the officials of the city of New Bern. I am speaking as a plea on behalf of the citizens of Duffy Field. Please don't think that you are losing because you are not, because God has the last say. So, we had this beautiful cleanup, cleanup on the deities of the Duffy Field Fitness Committee. And I have always have been the chairman of the food, and I never asked the city to give us food for, for something that needed to be done for our community. But thank God that my good traveling friend, Mary, Mary Smith, who was 94 years old, the day that I was rejected, helped me, and I thank you, Alderman Best, for your contribution, because we didn't want money from the city, we wanted individual money, and it was a great success. And I wanted the people to just don't worry about Stanley White, because God has it all in his plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sandy Bruno.
Mayor and Board, I'd like to say a few words first and foremost.
Mayor and Board, I'd like to say a few words first before Sandy's comments, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Just to give, um, especially to the people watching us and following us, some context as to her comments tonight. A couple of weeks ago, we launched the Love My City campaign, intended to inject some positivity in New Bern and highlight the bonds that we feel with the place where we live, work, raise a family, play, recreate. We've asked folks to take a photo or shoot a video and tell us what you like about New Bern, and we're doing the same. We've contracted with a local videographer who will put together 10 videos featuring businesses, residents, organizations, people who do so much for New Bern. Uh, we started with the mayor's video, which has been very popular. We also did one with New Bern Fire Rescue. Next, we will debut one with the city manager. As part of that campaign, we also asked folks to write us love letters. Tell us what you love about New Bern. Sandy Bruno was the very first one to respond, and she's here tonight to read her letter.
Thank you so much, Colleen. It's, it's really my honor to be here, and thank you to all of you aldermen for all the wonderful work that you're doing. It's, it's just been such a pleasure for my husband and I to be a part of New Bern as we have been. My husband Frank and I moved to New Bern from Berlin, Germany in 2001. It was December of 2001. We spent three wonderful years in Berlin, enjoying the art, the architecture, the symphony, the theater, the historic surroundings on the Spray River. After the 9/11 attack on our home, we decided to cut short our time in Berlin and to go home. And home was New Bern. We had purchased our New Bern home in May of 2001 without doing hardly any research. The only thing we knew about New Bern was that my Aunt Mary and Uncle Jack Conover lived here in Trent Woods and loved it. New Bern immediately felt like my forever home. Through the Craven Arts Council, the Twin Rivers Artists Association, the Costa Women's Forum, the New Bern Yacht Club, the Historical Society, the North Carolina Symphony, Triumph Palace, and the Civic Theater, and the Rivertown Theater, and many other organizations. I soon discovered that New Bern had it all. A very friendly city with art, architecture, music, theater, and history set, set right here on two beautiful rivers. What could be better? I love my city. I also, it is my honor to share with the aldermen tonight a painting that I, uh, did about six weeks ago, and it was shown at the Arts Council last month. And the theme of the exhibit at the Arts Council for September was New Bern Strong. Thanking all of the wonderful organizations and residents, aldermen, and everyone who pitched in after Florence's devastation on everyone last year. It's just my honor to be a part of what we have now refurbished downtown and the excitement that, that we are continuing to grow. With Colleen's permission, I would like to give this painting to the city so that you all remember that New Bern is strong.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. If anyone would like to participate in the campaign, you can email your love letters to info@newbernnc.gov. You can tag us with your thoughts, photos, or videos on Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram. We're at City of N V and City of New Bern. Thank you.
At this time, we'll get to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like my motion to approve the consent agenda.
Say that. Motion second to approve, is there discussion? Seeing now, on favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. It's going to be item number 12, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12 is a presentation by Mr. Bouchard, our Director of Public Utilities, demonstrating the value of the city's electric utility system to the community. Leading into that, and I'm not gonna try to steal Charlie's thunder a little bit here, but I do want to recognize that one of our consent agenda items was for the board, consider approving a proclamation for North Carolina Public Power Week. This is observed annually during the first full week of October in 2019. It is October the 6th through the 12th. But essentially, it's a week designating as North Carolina Public Power Week to recognize the value of, um, community power, especially those with municipalities throughout the state of North Carolina. As you know, we're a member of Electric Cities, which is a 32-member organization, and, and we are glad to be a part of that and provide a reliable, sustainable power source for our community. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Charlie, and he's going to demonstrate some of that value that the, having this, this utility in our city has for our citizens and those we serve.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Good evening.
Good evening.
In addition to keeping the lights on, electric utility brings a lot more value to the community than, than just keeping the lights on every day. This report was developed simply to explore the numerous ways that the utility can bring value to the community. I don't plan on going through this in, in great detail. It's a, the, the report is in draft form. I simply submitted it to you so you have an opportunity to review it and provide any comments that you want to this evening before I, I go back and try to finalize it. I'm just submitting it for your general awareness and, uh, and your review. Otherwise, I'm not asking you to take any action tonight on this, so if there's any questions.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Grants. Are you, have you looked at, um, seeking any grants to upgrade any of the facilities? Like any of the, just like say this, is, uh, Mumpet. How is each individual, um, vendor receive electricity or power to, to operate under? Could you explain that to me?
I've certainly tried. Mumpet is a great example. It's hard to put a real solid dollar number on how much value that brings to the community, but, um, the electric utility and our other utilities go out there and they help set up the festival. They install plugins so that our vendors and our, and our displays, people can plug in, have lights and power. If the electric utility wasn't around, you'd probably be contracting that out and paying for that through other services. As far as grants go, um, we are actually in the process right now of working with the Gold Leaf Grant application, and we're applying for a $2 million grant to, for the purpose of hazard mitigation for both electric systems, water and wastewater systems. And in addition to that, we're working with our economic development staff on a $10 million EDA grant that will hopefully improve economic resiliency in the area by helping us fund a new substation, electric substation in a strategic part of the community.
Where, what part of the city would that go?
That would come out of the electric budget.
But which part would this, would that actually be set up at? The, 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 what should we seek, the location?
The location? The substation, we're, we're targeting property on the south side of towns, southeast side of town.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
I thought you, I thought you had some more presentation. I do have a couple of things I'd like to mention. I know Charlie, you and I have talked about, you know, this is a different world. I mean, years ago, uh, competing co-ops and municipalities and vertical integrated models like Duke, we all were not, we're, we're further apart. And I know that sometimes you and I talk about the possibility of future partnering with folks like Duke, that if they, if we have an area where we don't have a lot of grid and they do, or we have areas where we have a lot of grid and they don't, that we might could, um, figure out some way of, of, in many cases with New Bern, we had to have substations to backfeed, and we just can't, you know, economically put a substation everywhere we, we wanna do that. So I know you and I have talked about specific areas in the county where we might could work something out where we could, in effect, um, feed them or they feed us, and we would work out some equitable means of, of reimbursement.
You're exactly right. That's, those are all feasible to do and sit down with Duke. And I think what you're suggesting is how do we optimize our territorial footprint? Right now, there's customer choice as far as we can reach. How far do we go grab? What's our sweet spot for making revenue for this community? And it's been done in other communities where they've sat down with Duke and they've carved out territories. And they said, this is gonna be your sole territory. You evaluate potential of growth in that territory and see if it's, it's the type of revenue that you like and that makes financial sense. But if that's something you wanna entertain, I can certainly try to lead the organization through that, that process with Duke and try to further evaluate what does make sense for New Bern.
And years ago, when, uh, there was quite a boom and the absorption rate of homes was, was a lot better than in today's market, the city of New Bern and Duke would go out and put a lot of idle facilities in that we wouldn't actually get, uh, reimbursement in the form of an income stream or revenue stream for years to come. And so, um, you know, we found ourselves at one time, had an advantage and a disadvantage. The advantage was we were offering, um, a better opportunity for developers than Duke. But on the other hand, it, it was hurting us for these, these facilities to be sitting there for years and there'd be no payback. And so, um, there's probably three or four items, that being one of them, that, you know, probably be really good to sit down with Duke. The co-ops are a different market in themselves and, and explore some of these things that from a reciprocity standpoint, we might beneficially help each other. I know there's particularly one area, I won't mention, that is served not by the city of New Bern that has a, a really serious problem getting back on. And a lot of people, you know, assume that that's the city. It's actually, um, a larger, it's, it's Duke. But Alderman Odom, do you have something?
Um, yes, sir. Just along those same lines, I, I would like to see us actually take it a little bit further. I think what you're talking about, Charlie, is looking at customer choice as far as future development. I would like for us to look at what we have now currently on both grids. For example, um, it's probably public, public information, but Mayor and I are on Duke Power, and we're right smack dab in the middle of the city of New Bern. And I know that we also serve customers from an electric standpoint outside of our city limits. And especially in storm events, I'm sure my fellow aldermen probably get the same. You get calls from folks about their power not being on, and then we have a little bit more conversation to find out they're actually on Duke, they're on the city. Same thing, we hear people, well, I have a city of New Bern address, I'm in the city limits. That's not necessarily the case, you're not in the city of New Bern proper. So I would like to, you know, take a, take a map from an internal standpoint first for us to evaluate it and make sure that it makes sense. But take a look at our coverage map from a city standpoint, Duke's coverage map for the same geographical area, and let's see what areas we can wheel and deal and swap and make sure that we sort of tighten up our service area. Because obviously, the further we go out, the more resources it's gonna be required to be able to service those accounts when we have accounts and our citizens that are actually inside of our city that aren't even serviced by our municipal service. So that's something that I would like for us to explore.
If you'd like to facilitate that point.
Great idea.
And I, I think for everybody to, uh, keep in their mind is it's 2024, 25, we're, we have our debt paid off.
Yes, sir.
And so we, you know, at that time, things will be even more positive for those that are on the city.
We're having an electric party.
I guess I have one more point I, I might mention right here in support of, uh, what Mr. Stevens was saying earlier about the proclamation for Public Power Week. We do have an additional activity tomorrow here at City Hall in the morning where the governor has approved a new license plate that is, um, keeping the lights on. And that's to benefit, um, those burn victims in hospitals, but it's also available to the public and for those that keep the, the power on. And they'll have a unveiling, so to speak, of that new license plate here tomorrow morning in grand scale, and then it'll be on display throughout the week in Mumpet.
Awesome.
Do you need a plate?
Thank you.
A lot, Kevin. Alderman Best, do you have a?
Yeah, Mr. Bouchard, I just wanted to get an understanding of, um, this particular program here that you're speaking of. That this is not gonna, in no way interfere with a citizen that is on Duke Energy already having to be, it's gonna interfere with him and possibly having to change over to city utility, to city electric?
I, I think what we're suggesting is to explore where our territorial boundaries are.
Okay.
Both existing right now, what we serve, and what may be forecasted growth. And then have some internal discussions on about, does that make good sense? Is it, are we optimizing the utility's ability to make revenue? I don't wanna put ideas in Mr. Odom's mind, but is that actually what you're asking for?
It is, and, and to be honest with Alderman Best, yes, it may potentially wind up where a Duke Energy customer, such as myself, would switch over to city of New Bern Electric. Now, the, the fact that our rates are virtually on par, in some cases, I saw a flyer that you actually, your department put out recently, we're actually lower than Duke in many instances. The, the rate argument now is, is really moot point. And for those that are on city of New Bern versus those that are on Duke, most of the time in a storm event, city of New Bern's on a lot quicker. And you can maybe share some of those statistics. We're not here to throw Duke under the bus tonight, but the statistics are what they are. How much quicker do we get our customers on versus Duke?
But it's in this report. Let me look here.
Five to seven times more reliable.
I understand that.
Five to seven times more reliable.
I understand that. And also, let me into, you know, let me put this point in. There may be where there's certain areas within the city that's without electricity, but I'm on Duke and I'm on the west end of New Bern, I'm not out of power. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot to look at. And me personally, I would not want to change over, and I'm just sorry I'm saying it, this is my opinion. I've been with Duke, and I know there's lots of other citizens that with Duke that may not want to change over. So I guess we'll have to, um, discuss that and come to the roundtable at that point in time.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
It's going to item number 13, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13 is considerations of the board to adopt a resolution of intent to rebuild and elevate Stanley White Recreation Center at its current location, if approved by FEMA and an engineer. As you recall, the status, uh, of the Stanley White Recreation Center was discussed at length at a work session on the 17th of September, as well as the regular meeting that we had on the 24th of September. At the meeting on the 24th, the board voted to consider adopting a resolution of intent to rebuild and elevate the structure at its current location, if FEMA would allow so, and an engineering consultant approved of us doing such. So the proposed, proposed resolution before you tonight is as requested by the board that you wish to have brought before you. So at this time, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mark, I'm, just 'cause I know some of the individuals that are here for this item, is it possible, um, so, you can update the citizens from the meeting that was held with all of the elected officials in regards to any status update for Stanley White, please?
Sure, yeah. I was gonna do that under my city manager's report, but it's probably, uh, a very good segue into giving an update. So we had a very extensive meeting, I would say long meeting, uh, with some higher-ups with FEMA on Friday this past week. We had a federal coordinating officer who is appointed basically by the president to, uh, to oversee the recovery and the distribution from, for this event, Hurricane Florence. We also had the infrastructure branch manager, director, I think it is, IBD, uh, that was here out of Raleigh, who's basically the overall of administration of the P A and I A assistance that is available through Hurricane Florence recovery, um, and, and various others. Mayor was there, Alderman Astor, I know you were there. There were, there were lots of other people, staff-wise, in attendance. Can't remember who else was, who all else was there. But we had a good crowd sitting around a table discussing some very detailed points about some of the issues that we're having with the recovery from Hurricane Florence. One of those topics was the Stanley White Recreation Center.
Recreation Center. We basically, it appears as if they are willing to work with us to expedite moving this project along after our meeting on Friday. They are looking at and requested several pieces of information, which staff is currently compiling. Honestly, we probably had already submitted to them before, but we're going to resubmit it to them, to the infrastructure branch director up in Raleigh and also copy our federal coordinating officer. And in doing so, they're going to make some determinations on a few factors. One, about what methodology should be used, i.e., it could be, can it be repaired, dry proof, dry flood proof, whether it can flood beds, whatever. Or does it need to be rebuilt? There were some critical points we discussed without getting into, I mean, just a ton of very technical details. But that's the things that we as staff have been working through on a, on a regular basis with FEMA, trying to get us through this process so that we can get the funds back to rebuild Stanley White Recreation Center in one, in some capacity or another. And it's been a very long and arduous process, but it appears as if now it's kind of gathering some steam because of the issues that I think those two individuals that came down here that are higher up recognized some of the, I'm trying to think of a politically correct way to say it, some of, some of the mess that we've been dealt with and that we're having to try to work our way out of in incorrect information that was provided for us, incorrect directions that were requested for us to follow, that we didn't need to do, lots of different things. So I think they've recognized that we're going to try to push this thing along as quickly as we can and it should have already been done. So we're going to get that information hopefully to submit it to them that they requested by Friday. They said that they would put this at the top of their list and hopefully have an answer back to us within a week. I think that was the promise that was, was said. And then hopefully push this project along as quickly as we can. The other big project, the other big win, and not since we're talking about Stanley White Recreation Center, but that came out of this meeting, we have submitted, and it's not necessarily about Stanley White Recreation Center, but it has a lot to do with the area and quite frankly, has a lot to do with the entire city as a whole, is we had some very, very lengthy discussions regarding a major ditch cleaning and mucking out and, and whatever you want to call it, restoration for all intensive purposes of all 80 miles of the city's drainage infrastructure. This is a major, major, major project. And so we have, in that meeting, we were, we were given some direction to look at this as two different types of projects, a CAT A project and a CAT D. So CAT A, we're getting into the technical terms here, but a category A project is much like our debris removal that we do right after a, a storm event, whether that's construction demolition debris or whether that's vegetative debris. So anytime we do those, those are, those projects are done through a contract. We put, we basically go out, determine what our damages are or estimate them the best we can. And then we let the contract, that contract is lit, we have a contractor that comes in and performs the work. And then we have a monitoring firm that monitors what they're doing. And then all of that information, after the work is complete, is reconciled and sent into FEMA for reimbursement. Much like our debris was done, we received about three and a half million dollars of that 4.5 that's been, that we expended during that storm. We have received that as a reimbursement. So that being said, all 80 miles of eligible debris and fill-in silt from the storms that need to be dug out and restored back to their original stream lengths, that is something that will be category A eligible, which is a very good thing. The other part of it is a category D project, which is permanent measures, permanent work. And the permanent work is work that is performed on stream bank restorations as in if this is a, a leaning tree that has exposed a root ball to some extent and that leaning tree needs to be taken out, taken out. And because it was in the, the bank of the, the stream, then at that point, it exposes some vulnerability to the stream bank, then at that point, the permanent work would be restored back and the stream bank would be restored back like it was. Those are done on an individual located basis, as in all 80 miles, we would have to go out physically locate where those ditches were damaged. And then we submit that scope of work in 100% entirety to, to Mr. Ferguson, who's the IBD up in Raleigh. And at that point, they are going to put it through as category D work. So if all of that comes to fruition, the first 20% of assessment that they did back some months ago when we first started this process, come out to be somewhere 1.6 to $2 million, somewhere on an estimated value, and that was 20% of the system. So we're talking about a multi, multi-million dollar improvement to our entire citywide drainage system. So two big, big topics that we discussed, there were a couple of other minor items that are kind of irrelevant to this discussion, but hopefully that covers kind of what you're looking for.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I have a question. I just, I'm curious, because I want to make sure that we're not missing anything in this resolution, but the funds, the FEMA funds, since this revolution will be seen by FEMA and anybody else, should we include the word if FEMA funds and engineering consultants are approved? Because we want the money from FEMA. Is that something that we want in there?
JR.
JR. I just want to make sure we're not leaving out. I don't want to give anybody the opportunity to say we left something out.
I apologize because I've not actually read the resolution, but I would not recommend we include anything tying FEMA funds to anything specific unless it is something we, specifically if you want to ask FEMA for.
Yeah, can you speak to the mic?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I would, I would not recommend that we tie anything specifically to FEMA funding, similar to any like payroll stuff we do. For example, you don't tie decisions to FEMA funding. I would not recommend that in this particular case.
Well, just, just curious, why would you would say that if we're going through the FEMA process to mitigate this, asking them for the funding?
While we might be asking them for the funding, I, I don't, I don't believe it's appropriate to tie it directly to the FEMA funding. The question's on FEMA funding, FEMA determination, maybe. I would, I would say it might be okay, but if, but directly to the FEMA funding itself, I don't believe would be appropriate.
I hadn't even thought about this, but if we, do you think, do you think the resolution could, could hurt us without some verbiage like that in it? Because it now appears that I don't want FEMA to think that we're going to build it back with or without their funds. We want to do everything we can to get FEMA money. So I know that, I don't know your thoughts on it.
Generally speaking, I would say it has been advised, whenever you're doing infrastructure work or grant work, if you want to call it that, because ultimately FEMA is a grant program. You're, you are, you are incurring a loss and you apply for this grant to restore yourself back to the norm that it was prior to the storm. So generally speaking, FEMA does not like any administrative policies or any of that kind of stuff that, that says you're going to do this when you get FEMA funds because, or obligating yourself to. But I think with this particular purpose, and, and, you know, I, I really don't know how FEMA would view it, but I would say that what, what essentially the way I read what is being considered to not as the resolution, as we discussed at the last meeting with the intent of the board to either rebuild or elevate Stanley White Recreation Center at its current location, if FEMA approves and allows that to happen. Because if I recall correctly what some of the things Corey said whenever he presented this, is that FEMA could, if this is considered to be a critical infrastructure piece of project, which we've kind of had some discussions about that on Friday as well, then they may have some say as to whether or not it could be located at a certain place or if it has to be elevated or what kind of, how that thing, how their grant funds get used. So I think there's some say, and I can't remember the exact verbiage that he used, I'd have to go back and review the video, but I just remember something that he said that there, there could potentially be, and that's the reason why that little section was put in there, if y'all will recall, about an engineer approving it as well as if FEMA approved it.
Well, it does state in here, after reading it closer, it does state in here that the under alternate procedures, Hurricane Florence and Michael, under section 428 of the Stafford Act. So that's basically.
In addition to that, Corey from DRS had had reviewed the resolution and he okayed it.
And I will say too, that, that in our meeting Friday, they, meaning the folks from FEMA, had watched the video of Tuesday, last Tuesday, the, the last meeting in Tuesdays of September meeting. And they didn't say, don't do this, because they didn't give us any direction. But of course, you know, we've, we've had a lot of direction that was necessarily right in a lot of ways either, so.
If Corey reviewed it, I'm okay with it. I think, I didn't even think about it until Alderman Bingels.
I just want to make sure we're, I don't want to come back to haunt us in the sense of FEMA said you didn't do this, you didn't do that. I just want to cover ourselves.
I, I think the main thing that they look at is discretionary stuff. It is, it's primarily like, just as an example, if I was to say, hey, you know, city employees, if we get FEMA funding, you're going to get paid something, you know, for working this storm. You cannot do that kind of stuff. It's either a you shall or you shall not kind of verbiage that they like to see.
Alderman.
Mayor, if we were rewind back to the, the last meeting where we discussed this, Alderman, Alderman Harris, if you, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe you made a motion that we were going to rebuild it back. And I said, I asked Corey, I said, is that going to jeopardize us potentially getting any funding? And Corey said, well, you might want to do this. And I think he made some suggestions, which is included in here, which now, as Alderman Astor just said, has been approved by Corey. So I'm comfortable with the resolution as it sits before us tonight.
Alderman Best.
Since we're speaking on this topic here, I just want to make sure that, okay, it says in the resolution that approves the rebuild of the structure at that Pacific site. Now, does that mean that Pacific site where it's actually current located, FEMA denies that location, that it can be put someplace else on those 14 acres? So that's what that Pacific site means? Includes all 14 acres?
I would think so. I would think so too. I think the address is 921 Chatham.
But I'm just saying, they were saying.
If we had to shift the building 100 feet one way or the other, is that what you're saying?
Right. It's like there's, Corey was saying there was some soil issues. So if there's some soil issues right there, that particular location where it's built right now, that, that center can be moved someplace else on those 14 acres. That's what I take it to mean.
Okay.
That's my interpretation.
Questions, comments?
He was, I got anything else to say? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution in support, okay, a resolution of the intent to rebuild and elevate Stanley White Recreation Center at its current location if approved by FEMA and an engineer.
Second. Motion, Alderman Harris, second, and Alderman Kinsey, is there further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Praise the Lord.
We appreciate the, the public's patience with us. There's, there's quite a bit of, part of the discussion, I think probably a good 15 minutes though, was pure semantics. And, and a lot of that was within the FEMA staff itself. So again, I appreciate everybody's patience on this item. Item number 14.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 14 is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution in support of Coastal Leadership's Resolution to Protect the Environmental and Economic Future of North Carolina's Coast. Coastal Leadership, which consists of mayors from coastal cities and towns in 20 different North Carolina communities, or counties, I'm sorry, has prepared a resolution encouraging the state federal governments not to drill for oil in the Atlantic Ocean. The board is asked to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the mayor to join the other mayors in signing the leadership's resolution discouraging oil or gas exploration, leasing and extraction within the Atlantic Ocean. So that resolution is before you tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Does board have any questions? Okay, I don't, I don't want this to die for lack of any activities, so I better start doing some talking. Most of the, the meetings I go to with the other mayors, this comes up. Latest sign on to this, signature on to this is the city of Wilmington. The way I look at this is, is even though this is kind of a sensational statement, it, it comes down to the, the fact that I would not want to see oil drilling rigs, natural gas drilling rigs sitting out in the middle of this river. And our sister cities and towns and rural areas on the coast do not necessarily right now want to see them there with the present technology. And so part of this discussion is the fact that somehow or another politically, the, the whole state of Florida under Governor Rick Scott, now U.S. Senator Rick Scott, was found to be environmentally sensitive. And that had somewhat a lot of things to do with the Gulf of Mexico and oil spills out in that area. And so from there, again, the discussion on the state level has been, well, if, if this is, the technology is, is not there, the margin of error is greater than, than coastal areas want to see, then why is, if, if Florida can get an exemption, why can't North Carolina? And this started out on the coastal cities, particularly Nagshead, and it has been approved all the way inland to Kinston. And so again, at present time, there are 23 cities. Some of the concerns are while we're worried about noise levels in New Bern, North Carolina, the decimal readings on the shock, the shock waves that are sent through the ocean for the testing to find the pockets of, of resources can be anywhere from 100 to 250 decimals. So from a marine life standpoint and from just an environmental, you know, I don't know how many of y'all remember back in the eighties, we had the red tide up in eastern North Carolina. And that's a phenomenon normally associated with Florida. And it devastated our, our coastal environment. And that actually is what caused the start of Seafood Festival, was that it significantly impacted the economic stability of the coastal areas and they, they wanted to do something to start tourism and things coming back. And, and the actual sea, the Seafood Festival, which we had last weekend, was a direct result of red tide phenomenon. So again, there's, there's a lot of concerns and I would, I would strongly ask board to consider this because, you know, you never know when New Bern might need something.
Well, Mayor, I'm going to step out here, okay, since I know this is important to you. You know, I'm about business and leadership and trying to take our independence from other countries' oil and whatever. But in the sense of community and the state of North Carolina and the state that I now call my home, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution in support of Coastal Leadership's Resolution to Protect the Environmental and Economic Future of North Carolina's Coast.
Second. We have a motion. And a second, is there any discussion on the side? I know we have two aldermen that aren't here, but we still have a quorum and I don't know how long they'll, they'll be gone. But I will start with a roll call with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 15.
Mayor, item number 15 is a resolution approving the installation of additional streetlight on Charles.
on Charles Street, request of Alderwoman Harris. Additional streetlight is asked to be installed near the area of 2308 Charles Street. Department of Public Utilities has evaluated this area and determined that it does not meet the city's light standard, therefore it is their recommendation that an additional light be installed. Cost of this installation is $550.38 for the Public Utilities and recurring monthly cost of $8.44 for Public Works. There's a memo that's included in your packet, Mr. Bouchard, happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion with that resolution approving the installation of additional streetlights on Charles Street.
Second.
Motion, and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm number 16.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm number 16, is resolution approving the installation of additional streetlight on Fairmount Way. Paul Ryan of 322 Fairmount Way has requested an additional streetlight be installed in the area of cul-de-sac near 322 Fairmount Way. The Department of Public Utilities evaluated and determined that it does meet the city's light standard. However, the police department has reviewed the area and recommends this additional lighting be installed. The cost of the installation is $1,396.70 for the Public Utilities, and the recurring monthly cost for Public Works will be $8.44. There's a memo included.
Did you say, did it currently meets our lighting standard?
So typically, our process is, whenever we have a request like this, there's normally two reasons. One, it's a dark area that either will meet the city's lighting standard on a certain street, or based on spacing and things like that, or it may be for security reasons. If a certain cul-de-sac area may be dark and there's been some issues with it. So when Mr. Bouchard sends his staff out there to take a look at it, if it meets the distance requirements, then Public Utilities will say, "Well, it meets the requirements." But then the police have an opportunity to evaluate it to see if there's benefit in having the light from a standpoint of safety and security. So at that point, the police department can make a recommendation as well, and then that's the reason why it comes before the boards of consideration.
I'm just curious, because this light costs $1,400 versus $550, is it because they need more wattage there, they need more lights? I'm just curious. I mean, I like, we need lighting, so I'm definitely.
I don't think it really has anything to do with wattage as much as it does the actual infrastructure.
Needed.
It could be that it's a further length that they have to run, so the wiring might be farther. It could be that there's a different lighting fixture that's used or whatever. It's basically material cost.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting a resolution approving the installation of the light on Fairmount Way.
Second. Motion, and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm number 17.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm number 17, is an ordinance amending section 70-184, streets upon which the operation of tractor-trailers is prohibited. Residents of the Kings Row subdivision have requested that tractor-trailers be prohibited from operating on Jimmy's Creek Drive. Public Works has evaluated this street and supports the request. There's a memo that's included in your packet, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Do we have questions?
Mayor, just a comment, so my counterparts are aware, with the increased commercial traffic along the corridor of Glen Burney, turning on to MLK, there's been a lot of trucks that figure they will take the back way out to get on Highway 17, so they're cutting through the Kings Row neighborhood. We already have some very narrow streets there from a fire department standpoint, and we felt like it was best interest of the city, as the citizens as well, to adopt this to restrict and prohibit those tractor-trailers from flowing through the neighborhood. If there's no other question, I'd like to motion we adopt ordinance amending section 70-184, streets upon which the operation of tractor-trailers is prohibited.
Second.
Motion, and second, is there discussion?
Now, just a, can I have a question on that one? Because we're doing this pretty much, I'm seeing it pop up in a lot of the neighborhoods, which is a good thing, but how do we really enforce that? You know, you put a sign and they're still going through there, does it really solve the problem? So I just want to make sure, as we're doing these, that, you know, I don't know if at first, you know, you set up a, maybe a police presence at first, not the whole time, to just say, "Hey, aware, there's a sign here, don't cut through." Because I think this is the third one we've done in six months.
Proper signage for starters.
Yeah, the signage is the big part. Typically, your signage actually will go up and show the trucks with the red circle with the slash through it, you know, no-through trucks, sign underneath of it kind of says that. At that point, what it does, it also allows by law for the police officers to enforce it. And if they happen to be on that street and they see a truck coming down there, they have the right to stop it at that point, and they can question as to why they're there, and if they don't have a valid reason, such as if they're, you know, if they're not a moving van that's getting ready to go down and move somebody out of a house within that subdivision, then at that point, they could cite it.
Thank you.
And I would think in this case, if a particular 18 liter truck actually had business and could produce such, they would not get a ticket if they needed to bring something into a specific area. That's what we ran into in some of the areas. But if they do not have proper documentation that they got business in there, then they would be getting a ticket. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we have a motion, and second. Roll call starting with Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's go to appointments, starting with Alderman Odom.
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
None.
Alderman Kinsey?
None.
Alderman Astor?
None.
Alderwoman Harris?
None.
Alderman Bingle?
None.
Okay, attorneys report.
One matter, Mayor, you have to be forward tonight, Mayor members of the board, their resolution regarding demolition of the unfit dwelling located at 827 Cedar Street. This is a property that went through the city's housing process. Late in that process, the lender foreclosed on the property, which is not uncommon. Once the lender obtained the property, the lender concluded that it was wiser to convey the property to the city. So we now own that property, and unfortunately, we own the unfit dwelling. To proceed with demolition, staff needs a resolution from you authorizing that demolition.
So.
Second.
Motion, and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Anything else on the attorney's?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, city managers report.
Just real quick, Mayor, obviously, we've got some big events coming up. Just a reminder that Mumbfest is this weekend, so anybody who is looking to come downtown, there will be some streets closed, obviously, for the festival. We encourage people to be mindful, there will be lots of pedestrians out, walking across the bridge, walking across the crosswalks, especially at Front and Front Streets, South Front and East Front, and throughout our downtown and everything. So we hope everyone has an enjoyable time. I know staff have been working hard in preparations for Mumbfest, so it's always a very busy time of the year, and we just encourage people to enjoy themselves, but be mindful of the crowds. We, I briefed real quickly on the FEMA update meeting that we had. We did have another meeting yesterday with the care group. This is a group of concerned citizens that are advocating for some resiliency things within the city, and we kind of updated them on some items that the city's doing with regards to resiliency planning. One of the things that, as we've discussed on numerous occasions, is the resiliency plan. We have secured already about $45,000 in grant funds for that particular resiliency plan. Mr. Rejerry and his staff, Ms. Olend Salem, who's here tonight since Jeff is at a conference, has been working on a request for qualifications package to be going out as soon as we get a little further along with securing funds, and in doing so, we're estimating that this plan is probably going to be somewhere in the 110 to 150,000 range, and that's what we've kind of been telling y'all all along. But as of right now, we're still short of that, so we have about $45,000 secured. We have a $70,000 grant currently that is at the Attorney General's office through his environmental enhancement grant funds, and that is, it's a pretty competitive grant, but they do have some focus on the east this year, I think, eastern North Carolina. So we could be in the running to get that. There's no guarantees, but we won't find out until probably first of the year, first quarter of the year of 2021, so.
Mr. Stevens, no pie in the sky figures, but what are your estimations of the 80 miles of storm? And I think Alderman Astor, you had mentioned, somebody had mentioned to you that as much as two feet of silt, it could be removed, really improve our drains, but what, 10 to 20 million dollars potentially?
I would say you're probably looking at potentially a 10, if not more, maybe up to $20 million project, just depends on what you find. I mean, there's some areas that are pretty bad.
Well, I asked you that question because last night, meeting with the care group, you know, we've been talking about the resiliency plan, the clutter group, for quite some time. I'm not at all concerned that we haven't done it before, because now that we know potentially, and particularly we had a, that we are definitely going to get some Carter Block movement on drainage in New Bern, I guess pretty much getting an absolute. For us to have done a study eight months ago, and the group has got to go out for bids and quotes, not having the information that we're potentially, not only with the 80 miles of drainage, we're going to probably find we've got some, we've got some cul-de-sac problems that are going to have to be corrected in order for this system to work once we get in there. And I know we'll do aerial mapping and drone technology, we probably will make sure that for future generations that the 80 miles don't get in the condition they are right now. Having said that, I just think for the kind of money that the federal government is going to bless this city with, that it's, it's, it's time to, instead of waiting on everybody from mutual city participations, towns in Craven County, the county, other sources, it's time to get that study rolling. Because I think it's an excellent time that with the folks that are going to come in, and a lot of this, Mr. Stevens, you can elaborate a little further on it, the, I know you would look at getting contractors to actually, because they're knowledgeable and know how to work that system, I just think it's a really good time to have that study in hand both ways. What are your comments?
I would say, yes, I mean, it's our intent with regards to the large 80 mile project, we would definitely have contractors come in and do that work. With regards to the resiliency plan, I think you need some very qualified and experienced consultants to do those resiliency plans. The one that we spoke with, you know, they've done plans for Charleston, they were doing one for the Raleigh region area, they've done some down in Florida, several other places, Asheville, City of Asheville. So they've done multiple of these. However, anytime you're doing these things, you've got to send it out as an RFQ, because it will involve some engineering processes, it will require some professional seals possibly and recommendations, and anytime you have that, it requires you to do a qualifications-based selection, so.
Is there any, I mean, can we go ahead and maybe start this process? I'm sorry, I wasn't able to attend the care meeting last night, I was out of town, but I'm hearing from the participants in that. I know, I think Alderman Astor and Alderman Best attended, and from what I'm hearing from them, is they want us to proceed and start to move forward, that this resiliency study is extremely important to all of New Bern. Doesn't have to be downtown or anywhere, but we've had a lot of areas impacted. So I guess you need just some direction from the board to say, start the process. I mean, this is going to be a six, nine-month process just to get this RFQ and everything out there, so I say, let's go.
We certainly can get the RFQ out there. I certainly don't want to waste consulting time if you're not going to fund it, but if you feel that it's going to be funded regardless of whether we get grant funds or not, I have no problem sending that out there. And typically, and I'm sure JR would vouch for this as well, generally speaking, I would say that I would not advise going forward with a three-phase plan by only funding a one-phase part of the project. Generally speaking, you want to set it up to where it's fully funded anytime you're doing a big proposal plan like this.
When will we know about the Attorney General's grant? Is that what you said, Attorney?
First quarter of the year. So you're another, you could be a potentially, you know, four to six months out before you can hear back.
Mark, do you think it would be advisable for us to contact the county to see if they are interested in participating in this hiring a consultant? They've got issues too, and I'm not sure if they're working on a plan or not, or if they have any plans on hiring a consultant, but.
I have not been aware, I have not been made aware of any plan specifically from the county manager or any of their staff that they're doing one. I do not know what their willingness would be to support it. I'm sure that there's lots of other communities that could benefit from it. You know, it's just a concern of whether they can get enough people on board, and whether they even want to do it to begin with. I mean, it just, you know, it's truly up to what this board wants to direct their staff to do, and if you would like for me to reach out to the county, I can do that. If you want to move forward with the project, we can do that.
I think it would be a good idea to reach out to the county, because we've got our taxpaying citizens that pay city taxes, but they also pay county taxes, so they need to get something for their book as well from the county. So I don't think it would be a bad idea to reach out to them and give them the information and see how they receive it, and who knows, they may come on board with it.
Alderman Odom?
Mr. City Manager, can you explain to me, I've got two questions. One, what is the scope of a resiliency project? What are we expecting to get in return out of this, and what is the cost of it, estimated?
Estimated, you're probably looking for the three phases, depending on, you know, obviously in a qualifications-based election, send it out. They send their qualifications and their experience and their staff that's going to actually be put to this project. Then at that point, it becomes a negotiate, actually, they come up with a scope of work and what that cost is going to be, and then you can negotiate that or whatever. So we're estimating 110 to 150 is probably where that's going to come in. So 110,000 to 150,000 is probably somewhere where it's going to be. Since Amanda's back here, if you don't mind, Amanda, can you come up and just briefly, I know you've had a lot of conversations with various cities across the United States, we've called New Orleans, Charleston, lots of different places, and talked with them about their resiliency plans, but she can also highlight a little bit about what all the scope of this plan is, so she's got a lot more detail.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. So the resiliency plan would actually be a hazard mitigation and resiliency plan for the City of New Bern, to identify different vulnerabilities from an environmental standpoint, from an economic standpoint, and even from a social equity standpoint. To incorporate three phases, really, a first phase would be heavy on data analysis. We have a lot of data that our staff gathered following Hurricane Florence, but it would be further data analysis, and then basically synthesizing that into some information that, you know, staff and the community could process. The second phase, you know, would incorporate looking at some different projects that could happen, and then the final phase would have, you know, recommendations as far as prioritizing those projects to inform not only the public investment, but also inform citizens as far as what they could do to their individual properties, what businesses could do to be more resilient and sustainable in the wake of climate change and future hazards that are likely to happen to our coastal region, you know, to make businesses more economically resilient should this sort of disaster happen again in our community, as well as residents on an individual basis of improvements that they can make to their own personal property to be more prepared for the future. So that's very much in a nutshell.
So let me ask you this, let's say a major industry or commercial, another Columbia development is thinking about coming in in a particular area of town, is set stiff from the standpoint of elevation, contour, topography, whatever, and this in hand, just like when the city spent general fund monies to procure a branding campaign, handing this over to a potential investor in the City of New Bern, do you think that would be a positive thing to have versus no plan at all?
Yes, absolutely. And I mean, New Bern is an old And I mean, New Bern is an old city, so there's a lot of development that occurred before, you know, certain standards that are in place today, so, you know, it will certainly help improve upon the built environments and also enhance our natural environments that are so important to, you know, the beauty and the draw of our community, you know, as well as inform on what development practices would be most beneficial in the future.
Mark, is there a phased costing estimate, you know, what would phase one cost versus two and three? Is it front-end loaded or back-end loaded?
It's more back-end loaded.
It is more back-end loaded. Because we have a lot of data already compiled, that first phase is just kind of really digging into the data. Throughout all of the phases, there will be community input and community participation, so I do want to mention that, you know, that will be very important to this type of planning process.
So, is it structured to a point where you could put a R F Q out, get the phases back? We already have, would you say, forty-five thousand dollars in funding, and then that way we could move forward and not hold the progress up, and then if Q one comes around and we do get the funding, then we've already got our ducks in a row, if you will?
Normally speaking, on these types of things, you really are looking at, I mean, we could certainly put that in the R F Q, that we're looking at phases with subsequent potential funding for the other three phases. I think you're going to have a lot more piqued interest if it's all three phases together from, you know, firms, but I'm sure that we could draft it such that it could be phased out to where we want to start with phase one. And quite frankly, you know, the data collection thing, while it may, it may be short, and maybe we already have a lot of it, there's really not a lot of value to just having that. I mean, it's really the analysis, it's the community input sections of this plan, it's the, it's the back-end stuff that where the cost comes in that you've got, and that's the reason why it's really more back-end loaded on that. So, I would, I would say that you could certainly look at doing it that way, and we have been doing everything that we can, I don't know how many grants we've wrote, to try to get as much funding as we can for this thing, but currently, like I said, we're coming up a little short.
Mayor, I need a clarification, because it sounds like we're on two different conversations, because the first thing you were talking about is the ditching, and was there discussion on, you know, whether we were going to go ahead with hiring a contractor to start that process? Okay. And then the other one, when you said contact the county, that's in regards to then partnering with us for the resiliency plan, correct?
This specific conversation is entirely about the resiliency plan, the ditch stuff is, just don't even, don't even interject it.
I just want to make sure we're not doing, we were talking about it.
I think what the mayor was, what the mayor was trying to say is that the plan, had we done it eight months ago, if we'd have done a resiliency plan, would be completely different in recommendations than it would be, say, in three months from now, whenever we've been approved for eighty miles of ditch munking out. You understand what I'm saying?
Got you. Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Amanda, how many cities in eastern North Carolina are you aware of this in the process of developing such a plan?
I mean, I think there are some cities that are interested in doing this type of work, we're in connection constantly with our various different state and federal agencies and entities, and they were all very excited that the City of New Bern was willing to take this step and do this comprehensive planning process. We have found in writing grants and seeking funding for this, that it's not necessarily something that all communities do, at least at this level, so, you know, it has been a bit of a challenge to seek funds that do support planning, whereas a lot of the grant funds support implementation. And this plan obviously will support the implementation of the various different projects that all the departments have already identified, you know, but in a very long-term process for, you know, recovery and resiliency. So, I mean, there are a few, and I think more and more communities are beginning to discuss this, but what the hope would be that for, you know, coastal North Carolina, South Carolina, you know, that this could be a replicable type of plan that other communities could take and pull pieces and parts. It will certainly be very specific to New Bern and all of our different neighborhoods, but the idea is that our coastal cities, you know, and partners throughout the state could look at this and take, you know, take some pieces that they could apply in their own towns and cities.
If we proceed with this, would it jeopardize the grant with A G's office?
I don't think so. I mean, certainly, you know, I can look into that and answer, but we were told that likely would be informed first quarter of next year, but I am aware that they had a much larger response for their grant funding this year than any times past.
I just think some of the reason we haven't already adopted a resiliency plan is we're waiting for the goose to lay a golden egg, and we really seriously need to get on with the resiliency plan. I mean, we just got a scare with Dorian, and, you know, folks won't invest in our city. I think this is kind of like branding, it was a difficult decision. A M I implementation was a very difficult decision, but these are things that we do to be able to offer a total package of folks wanting to kind of move to the area or invest in our area in commercial or industrial improvements that we're saying, there's not any component of your decision-making that this city has left out, and part left out right now is resiliency plan.
I agree, I think we need to move forward with the resiliency plan, and I also think that it's, at some point in time when it's complete, we're going to have to have someone on board to enforce it or to implement it.
That would be phase four.
Yeah.
Could be ten.
And I look forward to the study and some workshops, so we can go through it. I mean, I don't want to get into a lot of detail, but I mean, we unfortunately have a city manager that's a professional engineer, and he has some ideas himself that I think are very worthy of consideration, that will totally change the dynamics of drainage in the City of New Bern. They're all going to tie into what this ten to twenty million dollars is going to be.
Is it possible for Ms. Amanda to find out if doing a resolution to adopt a resiliency plan would affect any type of grant before we did move forward, or that doesn't matter?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to adopt a resolution, I can certainly share that with the Attorney General's Office, that, you know, the board is in full support of that.
I mean, I'm sure the staff...
We need a resolution or is it just direction at this point? Or whatever, or just direction would be fine.
Mark, do you think that if we do this with the understanding that we already have forty-five thousand dollars in grant money, and we're going to start phase one, and the funding, if we receive it from the A G, would take care of phase two and three, you think that that would help our chances with the, with, I don't want to jeopardize the grant from A G's office.
We did write, for clarification, we did write the grant, the environmental enhancement grant to support phases two and three.
Oh, really?
Yes. So, we did share that we had already raised forty-five thousand dollars in grant funds to show that we did have financial support for that plan.
And how long will, do you think it would take to prepare such a plan? I mean, it would have been six months, a year?
I don't think so.
Every bit of a year, yeah.
A year?
Just to be safe.
I think we should proceed and give direction and start moving forward, getting votes or hiring the, is it going to be a R F Q or is it going to be a...
For those of us that have citizens that we hear from all the time because of the issues they're having, it's important to my citizens, and I know we have to look at it citywide, but it does impact all of us, flooding and all of that. Alderman Best, I know you feel the same way as I do, because we have it.
I would like to just, again, anything from the elected officials' standpoint and staff, if we want to get a delegation in Raleigh and talk with some folks in Attorney General's Office, I'm all for that, just as soon as we can doodle and get a date.
So, there's no questions? Do you make a motion to?
We don't, you said we didn't, you want more directions? We don't, you have the directions you need, Mark, or do we need to?
Not exactly, but, if, so, if I was to say, based on what I'm hearing moving forward, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, without saying, hey, Mark, here's an extra, you know, a hundred thousand dollars move forward, what I would take the discussion to be is, I'm kind of hearing direction to move forward with the R F Q as a full project with the understanding that we have forty-five thousand secured, and once we get these numbers back in this proposal, then at that point, I will come to you with either a budget amendment or you can tell me some other way you want to do it.
Absolutely.
Does that seem to be a fairly reasonable approach?
Yes.
Do you want to see a show of hands, or?
Yeah, let's...
Right, R F Qs aren't binding in any way, I mean, we can send it out there and we will, you know, with the intent that we're going to do this as an entire project, hopefully by the time we hear back from the R F Q, potentially award, you know, or not even award, but maybe say, hey, would you consider doing this in a phasing project in the negotiations? We can get them started on one, and then maybe we'll, at that point, we have found out about the other grant opportunity. If not, then the board may be on the hook to pay for the other two phases.
Let's have show of hands that we're moving this direction, okay? And if you want to get a couple of us to go to Raleigh, I'd be glad to go and see what we can get done. I mean, I don't know anybody in North Carolina right now who's working harder to get a resiliency plan in the City of New Bern, and you just took some action that further justifies the fact that this would be an excellent investment by that grant, whatever it is, Attorney General's Office, what's the name for it?
Environmental Enhancement Grant Program.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I just, Commissioner Sampson, I just want to put this on your back for a second here and see if you are willing to go back to the board of, to the county commissioners with this information you hear here tonight with the resiliency plan, and see if they'll be somehow wanting to meet with us or come on board with this plan. Can I ask that of you, or?
No.
Can you come to the podium if you...
I'll talk to the chairman, I haven't said, no, no, neither, I believe, you were a congressman.
Commissioner Sampson, can you come to the mic, please? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Well, I would be glad to take the message back.
Thank you.
But I would have said that the chairman had said to me that, we're sitting down and talking with some of the city officials, and it seemed like they weren't listening to him, so, but give me the message, I'll take it back, we can talk about it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'd be glad to meet with some of the board members if you'd like. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I have a question. City Manager, can I ask one? Since we had several people here tonight speaking to the noise ordinance, could you give us an update on the noise consultant? We had talked about it previously, and I just think it would be a good idea, because people are wondering what's going on, you know, it's not on our agenda where we're at on that.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, it's great timing that you asked that, because we thought, what better weekend for us to study noise than Mumfests weekend, and how it applies, and because we will have, you know, the Beer Garden that Swiss Bear's doing at the corner of Craven and Front Street, we're going to have the concert Friday night, we're going to have vendors, there's probably going to be some music at various establishments throughout downtown, so it provided an ample amount of opportunity to collect data, and that's one of the things that they're going to do, they're going to collect the data, see what that is, and then provide some recommendations. So, I have moved forward essentially with, as directed by the board, moving forward with the consultant to actually perform the work. They're supposed to be coming in this weekend, they're going to stay the weekend to do all of their data assessments and readings, and then at that point, they're going to take the draft ordinance that we have and confirm certain things, not legal things, that's Scotch world, but they're going to confirm technical things that are within their scope, and also analyze their readings and then provide back a recommendation to us through a report. They'll actually come to one of our meetings and provide some recommendations or their findings through this evaluation and this study of the draft ordinance. So, that's kind of where we are, so this weekend, if there's people roaming around with little music, with devices listening, that's what they're doing.
How much longer so after that? I mean, you think another month before we get a report, or when we...
I would say that's probably a safe date. I don't want to put words in their mouth.
So, sometime in November, we might be able to bring it back. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else in the city manager's report?
That's all I have to say.
Mr. Stevens, I just want to tell you that, you know, I've had to sit in and many meetings with you, like Friday, and I can tell you, as mayor, it's very reassuring to know that you're there with your laptop, because I know that anytime somebody's trying to pull one over on us, or whatever it might be the situation, you're as quick as anybody I've ever known to be able to retrieve the information needed for the best interest of the City of New Bern, and on many occasions, Friday, you demonstrated your efficiency at that, and I just want to thank you for what you do for the city, and I want to thank the whole staff, the whole employees of the City of New Bern, just like what's going to happen this weekend, Mumfests, it doesn't happen with just any singular employee, it happens with a lot, a lot of dedicated servants of the city, and we just thank all of you.
Thanks, sir.
So, at this time, I got myself off the track doing that. Let's go to new business, starting with Alderman Best.
Just a couple of things. Tomorrow night, I want to announce that the Redevelopment Commission is having a public hearing at Clinton Chapel, I think at six P M., and it's a good opportunity to come out and hear the plan that they've developed, make public comment, and, you know, get involved in the process. I think it's a great opportunity. Also, too, Ms. Sampson, I'm always glad to see you, and I want to thank all the people that participated in the cleanup of Duffy Field. I was out of town this weekend, but I saw, people posted a lot of pictures on Facebook, so I saw a lot of faces and people just getting out and cleaning up their neighborhood, and I think that's a good thing, so thank you to all those that participated. I also want to announce that the Convention Center will be open. Our first event at the Convention Center is October twentieth, and the Bell Ringers, the North Carolina Bell Ringers will have their convention there, and we're glad to welcome them back. They're an annual event we have here, of course, they had to cancel last year, but I'll tell you, it sure will be good to see cars in that parking lot again and see people going in and out of the Convention Center, and we continue to work as a city with the county, with tourism, to get people in here and to continue to drive our tourist economy, so I'm really glad about that, and I believe that's all I have, sir.
Okay. Alderman Harris.
I was going to say about the redevelopment...
No, that's all right, that's true.
So, the only other thing I have to say is happy birthday to my mother, it is her sixty-ninth birthday, so I think I can...
Happy birthday!
All right, that's it for me.
Alderman.
I too want to thank you, Mark, for getting these meetings together with FEMA. It was, I mean, we took two big giant steps forward on Friday. You know, there's several people, I mean, it's just really, to have the F C O here and some of the level of FEMA staff here, you know, I have to also thank, there's a New Bernian named Linda McMahon, I'm not sure how many of you might know her.
They all know Vince.
Pardon?
Everybody knows Vince.
Yes.
Vince McMahon.
What is it, the W W?
Yeah, Wild World Wrestling.
Wild World Wrestling, anyway, she happens to be a friend of the family, and some contact was made, and she is, or she was up until recently, in the, I don't even...
Small business.
Small business.
Carry a small business, or, you know, she was on the cabinet, President Trump's cabinet member, now she is taking another job and working directly with President Trump. We told her some of our issues, and she made contact with the acting director of FEMA, and then shortly thereafter, some of these meetings started taking place. So, several giant steps this week, and really want to thank Mark for putting it all together. Thank you.
We'd like to welcome Commissioner John Sampson and Reverend Ethel Sampson tonight, and also Alderman Bernard White, always good to see you, Alderman, thank you for all your service to our city. Alderman Kinsey.
Mark, I'd like to thank you again for sharing the information about the... Sammy White Center to inform the people where we're going and the things that we are doing down in the near future, as, um, we develop and receive more information from FEMA, thank you again for the work and effort.
Thank you.
Alderman Benner.
Um, I know everybody's seen on television, and I don't know, this may be, the time may be past, but have, have the city gone, I, I don't know, I think it's a joint effort, the city and the county joining together, and since this triple E virus is out spraying for mosquitoes, has any con, has the county contacted, the city, city contacted county? And then again, it's getting a little cool now, so I don't know if that's gonna eliminate some of the mosquito issues we have, but that was just some, a concern that I had.
We, uh, we, we have not been contacted, that, yeah, and we have, we have not done any spraying, we, we do generally do some spraying throughout the year, but it is, it is not as, um, I guess, often as some people would like, or, you know, some people even question the effectiveness of, of whether or not it actually works a great deal, that's one of the reasons why the, the county actually eliminated their program some years ago with countywide spraying, I don't know, Mr. Commissioner Sampson, you may say whether or not it's been re-implemented or not, but it went, I know towards the end of my time being the Director of Public Works, that that was eliminated, and I don't know, Matt, they used to have a program where they would provide the chemicals, and we would actually do the spraying, but I'm not even sure if that still exists or not, it, no, it does not, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, secondly, I just want to, um, know, I know, Mark, I guess I'll direct this to you, or Mr. Sabatelli, um, if possibly we could give a monthly report to our citizens on the city finances, of like, how much money is being, we've received by FEMA, um, how much tax money we've received, and what departments it, you know, that the FEMA money is going to, um, go to, um, just to keep our citizens abreast of what's, how the city is, um, spending their money, since it is taxpayers' monies, and, so, I, I just know, that's something that you can provide to our citizens, maybe once a month?
Yes, ma'am, we can do something to, some of that, we've looked into that in the past, and, uh, the desire wasn't there for it, but we can look at something similar like going forward, uh, with the new financial system, we are also looking at the possibility in the future of, uh, some, uh, other ounce, uh, other customer-facing portals, uh, that can attach to it, so we're, we're looking at those things at some point in the future anyway, uh, if you're specifically talking about FEMA-related items, we.
Any finances, yes.
Just anything at all?
City finances, yes.
Yeah, we can put a report together, that's not a problem.
And the reason why is because I know a lot of citizens, and especially elderly, don't have computers where they can go online and look at our website and get this information or whatever, they, they, they look at TV three, or whatever, so, and if we could just give that information out, that would be, I think it would be really helpful to some of our citizens, and you do, however you want to generate this report and do it, it's fine with me, I just, if the numbers can just get out there to our citizens, so that they know what's, what's happening with their money. And the third thing I have is, um, okay, the, I just want to bring this to the board's attention tonight, and see what we can, um, move forward on this, the owners of twenty-four oh nine Oaks Road came forward to Board of Alderman, um, back in June, requesting for, um, the zoning of, of a site there at twenty-four oh nine, um, they wanted to bring up tobacco vapor shop there, and this board denied that request, but now they're, uh, wanting to make another request to zone it to C four, and that way, if it's a zone to C four, then they can bring a convenience store to that location. Um, at this point, I think we just need to give directions to the Planning and Zoning Board, um, to bring in, make sure that there's some changes with, make an amendment to the land use ordinance, that it's gonna incorporate changes that tobacco use shops, vapor shops cannot be, um, within a C four zoning district, so if we just need to give directions to the Planning and Zoning Board tonight, I'd like to make a motion on that, if there's no other questions.
I have a question.
And Mr. Attorney, if there's anything that you can, um, bring forth?
Yes, ma'am, and what I can do is take, if the board wants me to proceed, take that direction and put on the next agenda a resolution, just like the bed and breakfast review, to take that issue to P and Z, to bring it back to you for a recommendation, the, the concept is this, after that, that resoning request, Mr. Rouge and Eric, Rouge and I discussed the, the notion that we did not address in our land use ordinance tobacco shops or vape shops, it's not an identified use, they're just considered retail uses, which means they can go in any commercial district, including neighborhood business districts, got thinking about that, and thought regardless of the zoning request, that it, it, it might be appropriate to, um, place those uses in our C three commercial zones, those are large retail, high-traffic, commercial areas, and keep them out of the neighborhood business districts, so the issue that would go to P and Z would be to create a specific use called tobacco shops and vape shops, um, and then make a recommendation as to what zones that that would be an appropriate use for, most likely a C three, that would be step one, and, and then whatever might happen later with the rezoning, we can certainly address, but the primary problem we have is tobacco shops and vape shops are, are free to go in, in any commercial district.
Well, I, this is a new one on me, but I, I don't, as a, as one step of, of the vote here, uh, I don't mind this moving forward for, for the discussion, but I don't, I don't want the board to, the Board of Alderman, to usurp or anything, a lower, the zoning board, whatever, um, would this not typically just go back through and they would reapply for this to the zoning board?
Well, here's, here's the, the, there's two legal issues, I'm.
Because I don't wanna give the applicant any reason based on.
Right.
The initiative on the part of the board to feel as though.
Right.
We are one way or the other prior to it going through the normal process.
You're exactly right, and, and this is a bit tricky, so I, I wanna talk about that there's two separate issues, the first legal issue is whether the Board of Alderman wants the Planning and Zoning Board to consider if it's appropriate to create a use called tobacco shops and vape shops, and place them in a particular commercial zone, or leave it the way it is, that's legal issue number one, separate and apart from everything, that's, that's question one. If the Planning and Zoning Board comes back, um, with a recommendation, or not, the board would then proceed to the public hearing, and a vote to amend the land use ordinance, or not, to create that use and place it in a particular zone, if all of that came to pass, and this board amended the code, created that use, placed that use in a C three zone only, at that point, anyone is free to apply for a rezoning request, including the gentleman on Oaks Road, and ask that his property be rezoned C four, and if that happened, he could do any use he wanted in that C four zone, but he could not put a tobacco shop or a vape shop there, because it would not be zoned for that. Doing the first thing does not mean that the board is implicitly approving a rezoning, they are two separate legal processes, but if the gentleman comes back now and asks for a rezoning to a C four, and promises that he'll never put a vape shop there, that legally means nothing, he can sell the business tomorrow, or change his mind the next day, and put a vape shop there, and the last time the board denied the request per fear that a tobacco shop vape shop would go there, so there's no legal way to preclude that, other than creating a use and putting that use in a particular zone, that's not a C four.
And you're recommending that we do it in a C three, which is a.
That, that is the highest, yeah, that, that would be MLK corridor, that would be our most vibrant, highest-traffic corridors.
So that would be specifically named under the C three zone?
Yeah, we would have a use, if you've ever looked at the table of permissible uses, you would have a use called tobacco shop vape shop, you'd go to the chart, and you would see a Z, a zoning use, under C three only, which means that's the only place it could go.
Right.
And we currently.
I think that's the safest move.
And again, that's why I wanna separate the two, because it, it's a separate issue in and of itself, as Jeff and I were talking about it, we thought to ourselves, you know, it probably is a wiser thing to do, to put those uses in the higher-traffic areas, and not have them in the neighborhood areas, next to schools, and in the smaller communities.
So what do you need for us to proceed with that?
Just some direction, and I'll put the resolution on the agenda, and again, just because I put the resolution on the agenda for the next meeting, doesn't mean you have to adopt it, and the resolution is to send it to P and Z for a recommendation to come back to you, none of, no, nothing is binding, until the very end it comes back to you, but direction tonight would cause me to draft it and put it on the agenda.
Do you, as our legal counsel, see from state and national, I think there's a couple of governors have, um, I don't know how enforceable or constitutional their, um, edicts or whatever have been, but do you anticipate, I just, um, just speaking for me, I'd like to get kinda slow on this, because of a lot of things that are going on, and, and, uh, everybody's read about it, I mean, it's, uh, very public knowledge of the, of the health hazards, and while we're on one hand trying to do everything we can to provide help care for, for everybody in America, we, we, we've got an industry that is, uh, causes, uh, it's, right there in newspapers every day, um, that.
Yeah, and that's a fair point, and again, this has nothing to do with banning anything, it's just, just putting things in the locations where they're best to be located.
So do you wanna motion on that?
I'm okay, if, if, if I can just get some general direction to.
Yeah, well, I, I make, I make a recommendation, we asking to include vaping and tobacco shops under a, classified under a C three zoning?
Okay, I'm gonna let him have his own.
Mr. Attorney, if you could, um, I don't really know how to word this, but could you, I'll put you on the spot, could you provide us some information and overview of what the exact role of a P and Z board is, because I watched a few of those meetings, and it, to me, I get the impression that they're a, another political body that is fielding opinions about various issues, and that political pressure, if you will, can somehow skew their recommendation to us, but it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that they are supposed to investigate the issue at hand and make recommendations outside of the political arena to us, and let us deal with politics, am I right in what I'm saying?
You're, you're exactly right, and I, I'll spare you a big speech, because we're gonna be talking about this in the coming months, um, we're at a tipping point where we've really got to go back and revisit how we do business with respect to our local governance, for decades, if not centuries, um, since P and Z boards were created by statute, they are supposed to be a technical advisory board, when you read the statute, when you read our code, they're supposed to be fielded with people that have specialized knowledge in land use and technical issues, it is not a political board, they are there to meet and have a public meeting, which means they must meet in public, so the public can sit and watch, um, while they research and contemplate what the best answer should be to make recommendations to you, a political body, they are not a political body, but what's happened over the decades, and it's very understandable, and, and not at all uncommon, is that there's a sense of wanting to be inclusive, and be transparent, and giving everyone a say, and the P and Z board has turned into, uh, turned from a technical board into a public body that conducts public hearings, so it's become basically a baby political body, that one must go through to get to this political body, which ultimately doesn't serve you at all, you're just hearing the same people arguing the same points twice, um, when that board needs the, the time and the ability, and, and, and without the political pressure, to reflect on what they believe the best answer is, regardless of what they think the best answer is, this board is political, you may agree or disagree with it for any reason you like, but at least you have the benefit of knowing what a team of folks who started it thoughtfully believed and recommended to you, so, that, we are going to try to evolve from where we've been for a century into a different place over the next year, and I don't think it will be fun or pleasant, but we've gotta get to that pain, that I think will result in a much better process for everyone.
Okay, Mayor, is there any other questions?
Go ahead, I, I want to just say, did you hear everything else? That's Alderman Kinsey.
Um, I'm gonna drive forward with the businesses downtown, when they started to develop, to bring downtown back, the City of New Bern passed an ordinance that people could move downtown, which the noise was, no residents, just plain businesses, now I'm gonna put it in reverse, so now people are moving in, we pass an ordinance to where people can move downtown and live, okay, I'm just putting it in reverse, so who's encroaching on who when it comes to noise-making, that's something that I am trying to understand a little bit, okay? Uh, and I think you said it very well, um, Mr. City Attorney, that we're gonna go back through a lot of pain and look at, read that in the ordinance, to the degree to get things correct, because, uh, before, it was just a business district downtown, and it wasn't anyone living on the third floor, but we made a, a decision that they can move in and have a part of a good life to bring the city back, to entertainment, enjoyment, but now it has, um, changed the volume of things, and I guess when the, um, consultant comes in, I guess they would help to make that decision, is that correct, on that issue?
Alderman Kinsey, I, I don't, you know, I appreciate your comments, but I do, I have to make a correction, there has been a residential district in downtown New Bern since the Civil War and before that, you look at the Ward House, it's been there, occupied as a residence, there have been many, the, the office that Norman Kellum works in now, had, was a residence, there was always residences in our business district, I don't know of any law or any zone that was changed to allow people to live in downtown, they've been living in downtown for years, in different places, um, what has changed is that people have gotten a little more creative, take, for instance, where I lived, it's either Zaytoun Toy Store years and years and years ago, the people that owned it lived upstairs, I mean, it was very modest, but they lived there, um, so things have changed, but you're, you're, I agree with you in that, you know, things are changing, the demographics of downtown are changing, it's exciting to see that downtown has a vibe, I call it a vibe, it's people walking at the streets, but I, I don't want people to think that this board or prior boards did anything to make residents happen, it's been there for a hundred-plus years, if you look at some of the older homes that have, have been in our downtown business district, they're mixed-use districts, I just wanna clarify that and appreciate your comments.
Well, thank you.
Mayor, is there any more questions?
No, no, go ahead.
Can we move forward with this, the motion is on the floor?
No, it's not a motion, we just gave them direction.
Oh, wait, the direction is on the floor, can Miss City, um, City Clerk, can you read back that direction, please?
Well, it wasn't super specific, but Mr. Davis had said he would bring back a resolution before the next board, um, for the board to indicate its, you know, the desire for the planning and zoning to consider changing things, is that correct?
I believe Alderman has to make a motion.
I made.
Recommendation?
I made a recommendation.
You made a recommendation, but not a motion.
That the City Attorney draft a.
Resolution.
A resolution, putting the smoking and vaping shops in C three districts.
To go before the P and Z board for.
To go before P and Z board, and what that rail sees. Got it?
Yeah, I've got it, but I took it to be a direction and not a true motion.
Right, that's correct, Brenda, that is, it's just direction, you're right, you're right, Brenda.
I mean, I wanna go along with this, only because I think that a lot of what we have dealt with in the past, or will be dealing with in the future, under what Mr. Davis said, we will be doing less of it, because administratively, a lot of it will be precluded anyway. we will be doing less of it because administratively, a lot of it will be precluded anyway, except in C three, is that right?
Well, I don't want to unpack all this tonight, but there's some subtleties with, you know, tobacco shop and a vape shop are going to deal with percentages of sales, so you can, we're not saying you can't buy, pack cigarettes at your local convenience store. We're going to define these uses as facilities that, that have X percent of their business, which is going to be a majority of their sales in these two products. So we're just saying, if you just sell vaping products and just a back, you're a tobaccoist, as they said back in the day, you're going to go in a C three. Everywhere else, you just can't, you can sell them in your store, but not as a primary-
Well, what would prevent them from having a convenience store and sell vaping products at that point?
They, they can't, well, they can, they can, but that's different than a vape shop with the flags and the neon and the, and the exclusive vaping products. And I think that's what the neighbors were most concerned about.
Sure.
And, and we have those kind of shops. We are, we are ninety percent sure that those shops only exist in C threes anyway, so we're not moving anyone around, we're just making it clear to stay in C threes.
Um, woman Harris, you have something on this, or?
No, I just, you know, since we were under new business, I did have a question because Ms. Sampson reminded me. I need, again, some clarifications on the thousand dollars that's allotted to us because they were doing the community cleanup. It was for Duffy Field, they are a nonprofit, it was open to everybody, and I wanted to be able to use some of the money to be able to provide them lunch, and I was denied. So I'm trying to understand why, what am I able to use those funds for if I can't help my constituents?
That might be more than, let, let's, hold that just a second, let's finish up on Alderman Best, and I'm going to come right back to you. Is the board going to proceed with Alderman Best's request?
Anyone who doesn't, there you go.
Are we good?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. You have anything else?
Okay.
Okay, let's go back, Alderman, Alderman Harris.
That's what I had to say, so I'm, I'm trying to understand the process again for the fifth time.
Alderman Harris, that, we were not able to provide that because, because it was for the, the lunch of that group. If you were to provide them with the bags, the supplies, those sorts of things, I think we're, I think we're even okay with, with providing bottles of water and those sorts of things. It was, it was just specifically providing lunch itself.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so when I go to Primbrook and they have their community day, that's a nonprofit, I'm able to provide some sort of food or something to them, so I don't understand why Duffy Field is an issue when they're a nonprofit or they're a community group. I mean, it's chips, water, snacks, it's for the community, it's free, it's open to the public to come and help clean.
It was, it was really the lunch that was the issue specifically regarding that one, not, I think we're trying to remember to that situation, like we, like I said, we provided the, we were okay with the water, we were okay with supplies and that sort of thing. It was just, it was just lunch itself was not, we didn't feel it was appropriate for that, for that event. Now, it, particularly because it was not a, just a public meeting, which is what those, which is really what those are supposed to be for, like snacks for public meetings and those sorts of things, refreshments specifically are listed within the policy.
Well, it was open to the whole city. Anybody was welcome to attend.
To go clean, I'm-
It was just being hosted by a particular nonprofit.
Right, I mean, do we need to go over the policy again? Because if that's the case, we might as well just take the thousand dollars from all the Aldermen and put it back in the general fund, because then I'm not able to help the individuals. I mean, lunch, breakfast, dinner, whatever the case may be, the funds are there and they're doing, they're, they're taking the time out of their day to clean up a community. Why could, why would I not, as the representative for that area, not be able to provide snacks or lunch, sandwiches, whatever the case may be?
Like I said, I think specifically it was the lunch issue, not necessarily the, not necessarily actually providing, like, some general refreshments, but like, I, I'm sorry, I'm going off, I'm going off memory, so I apologize.
Yeah, this was for this, the past weekend, but when we do National Night Out, I'm able to go get hamburgers and hot dogs for craving terrorists.
National Night Out is specifically mentioned within the policy.
Okay, so-
So maybe then we need to change this policy?
Yeah, I mean, we need to look over this policy because then, I mean, I'm not doing my constituents any justice with this thousand dollars if I can't do nothing for them except for a National Night Out.
I think we need to amend it some because if you can go buy water, sodas, and ice, why not food?
Right. And I mean, for me, I feel like it would be the Aldermen's responsibility that who, you know, they need to be, we need to be able to look at it and say, okay, last year I did it for this group, okay, I'm not going to be able to help you this year, or I gave so much this year to an event, I'm not going to be able to do it this year. So it's going to be my responsibility as an elected official to say, okay, I can do it this time, but not next, or I'm the one that is able to evaluate whether we can assist. But not to be able to do anything, I mean, it's just frustrating and it's not on you, it's not on the rest of the board, you know, I'm not frustrated with them, I'm just, I'm frustrated with policy, and I've said that since I've gotten to office, because this is the little bit amount of money that I'm able to do within my ward, and I feel like we really need to revisit it. I'm not looking for a, you know, a work session, I just want to know if there's anything in the policy that's legal, that we're allowed to amend so that we have a little bit more space or whatever to be able to, you know, do things.
Yeah, and, and we can, we can go back and tweak the policy, thus board direction to do so, to add something a little more, make it a little bit more flexible. That's not a problem at all. Provided whatever we amend meets state code.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, if state code says I can go buy some Subway sandwiches for the community because they're cleaning up Duffy Field and Stanley White, I would like to be able to do that.
And it's public.
Right.
Mayor, could I suggest that maybe finance director send out the policy to all the board members? We mark it up with any questions or concerns we have, send it back, get answers if they're not satisfactory, then we can bring it up again and we can change the policy. Would that, would that work?
That sounds good, thank you. Sorry about that, I just figured, you know, since we're a new business, I'll just throw that out there.
Okay. Alderman Best, you have anything else?
No.
Okay, Alderman Odom?
Yes, sir, I have a few things, I'll try to make them quick. First one's easy, I'd like to congratulate Alderman Harris on her award for twenty under forty given by the New Bern Super Bowl.
Oh, thank you.
We had a very nice event at the Chelsea a couple Friday nights ago, so congratulations on that.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being able to help bring down the average age of the board up here along with myself.
Oh, goodness.
The second item, there's been a lot of conversation throughout the community with the NCDOT, I guess the cutting of funds that they have for various projects, there was a lot of money that was expended due to the hurricane, so there were a lot of projects that have been put on hold. So I figured I'd take advantage of this opportunity to let the public know, there are three projects that are moving forward in spite of the freeze, if you will, for the DOT funding. Number one is the James City Improvements, that's the highway upgrades to interstate standards between Williams Road and East Thurman Road. The Havlock Bypass is still moving forward, as well as the forty-three connector, which will end the T, the road to nowhere, that they had coming off of Highway seventy. So those three projects are moving forward. And for those that may not follow, if you are on social media, the New Bern Area MPO has a Facebook page that keeps you abreast of all these changes and alerts as well. Last comment I want to make, Jeff's not here, but I wanted to thank him. We have had discussions and battles, if you will, regarding the Kmart building. I can't tell you how many times we have tried to reach out to the owners, we've worked in partnership with the mall, we've worked aside from the mall, we've done a lot of different things over the years, and it seems like our timing may have been just right on this last go-around, and we got a positive response from them that they will be demolishing the Kmart building. With that being said, it is a privately-owned parcel of land. The city of New Bern has no ownership, no direction, other than the zoning requirements that, or restrictions that are on that parcel. There's been a lot of thoughts and suggestions of what should happen there, and I agree with a lot of them, some of them I don't, but we have really no say in what happens there. But the benefit to all of us is a unsightly building that has been band-aided, if you will, I don't even think that's a word, but band-aided, if you will, over the past several years. We would call staff and say, hey, you're in violation of this, you need to fix it. They would come do the minimum requirement to get past, and we finally got to a point where they recognized the building is beyond repair and it will be demolished within the next several weeks, is my understanding. So I just wanted to thank staff, Attorney Davis as well, for his efforts in making it happen. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir.
Is there any further business coming for this, before Alderman's come?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion, second to adjourn. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Meeting is adjourned.